Time is now 7:09 and I'm calling to order and reconvening to open session the regular Board of Education meeting for Indian Prairie School District 204 on Monday, March 18th, 2019. Jackie Lee, please call the roll.
Mr. Carrubas?
Here.
Mr. Rayzac?
Here.
Ms. Peel?
Here.
Ms. Mr. Rising?
Here.
Ms. Demme?
Present.
Ms. Grover?
Here.
Ms. Donahue?
Here.
We do have a quorum. Ms. Grover, you lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
There's a lot of people there and I didn't see Joe, but here's Joe. We have a, oh, we have our board salutes first. I'm all mixed up here. Mark, will you please help us?
Sure. Congratulations to the District 204 students who recently participated in the state DECA competition. Ten students from Niqua Valley and two students from Matia Valley are moving on to the national DECA competition taking place in Florida next month. Ooh, lucky. Good luck to all the students and their advisors at Nationals.
Thank you. Ms. Grover?
The board salutes the District 204 students who recently completed in the Science Olympiad Regionals hosted by Niqua Valley High School. Two-hundred-and-thirty middle school students and over one-hundred-and-twenty high school students from District 204 competed in twenty-three events. Science Olympiad is a team competition that promotes collaboration as well as scientific reasoning and lab engineering practices. All three high schools won a bid to the state tournament. In the regionals, Niqua Valley took first place, Matia Valley was in third place, and Wabonzi Valley in fourth place. First-year competitors from Skullin Middle School won eighth place and Gregory Middle School won ninth place. Congratulations to the coaches and student competitors and thank you to the ninety student volunteers who assisted in running the tournament. Good luck to all the students in the state competition.
Thanks, Ms. Grover. Now it's time for a student representative report. This board meeting is from Matia Valley High School and Joe Bellmurray. Welcome, Joe.
Good evening. My name is Joe Bellmurray. I'm the student representative from Matia Valley High School. I'm very excited to be here tonight. I'm thrilled to say that Matia recognized a record three-hundred-and-forty-one Indian Prairie scholars back in February. This is nearly half our senior class. We introduced Mustang 30 on February 13th, which is a thirty-minute flex period allotted for students to meet and touch base with their teachers, make up tests, or just quiet study. It has been incredibly beneficial in the month it has been in effect, offering students that take the bus before and after school and athletes opportunities to get support. MV Stugow hosted a student government conference last Wednesday with all five high schools represented in the DVC. Student government members had the chance to share ideas, plan for future events, and gain an appreciation for each other's school cultures. I'd like to congratulate our speech team for their great performances at state this year. Senior Dirtwan Sherman placed fifth in state for humorous interpretation and original comedy. Senior Marty Adave placed second in state for oratorical declamation. I'd like to recognize MV Orcuses for putting on a fantastic showcase last month. Great job, girls. Matia hosted the Special Olympic Swim Meet on March 7th. I'd like to congratulate all the athletes that participated. I'd like to thank all the students and parents that came out to volunteer and put on such a great event. I'd also like to recognize our best buddies and peer partners groups for helping out and having such a positive impact. That's all I have for the March board report. Thanks, everyone, and until next time, go-go Mustangs.
Thank you.
We do not have public comment at this meeting, so we can move on to our agenda.
Yeah, nobody sign up.
No one signed up for public comment.
We haven't. No one signed up.
We didn't get rid of them, right?
Just to be clear. Just to be clear. We just had a PDA.
This is a rough day. We now move to the consent agenda and superintendent report. Dr. Sullivan.
Okay. A reminder that school board elections are almost upon us. April 2nd is Election Day, so it's important that our community get to know the candidates in order to make an informed choice. Several of the forums are posted online for viewing on our website, so you can take a look at those. Early voting began today, so be engaged in the process. These are really important positions to our schools and to the community at large. And next week, did you guys know it's spring break next week? Did you guys know that? Yeah. So I want to wish all of our students' families and teachers a relaxing and enjoyable week and to come back rejuvenated as we head, believe it or not, into the final quarter of the year. So we have a pretty hefty agenda in terms of approvals of administrative positions, so I'm going to move right to that. And we'll start with our first one. The first one is for Assistant Director for Student Services, beginning in July 1st. We're pleased to bring forward Steve Judson for the position. Steve comes to us from the Belleville area, Special Services Cooperative, where he serves in a similar position. That's pretty far away. We told Steve it wasn't necessary for him to make the trip for this, so we'll get to meet him at another board meeting, hopefully. Steve is a former speech-language pathologist who has moved into the special education administrative ranks, and we're excited to recommend Steve Judson for your approval to the position of Assistant Director of Student Services.
So I need a motion for the Board of Education to approve Stephen Judson as Assistant Director.
I'll move that the Board of Education approves Stephen Judson as Assistant Director of Student Services as presented.
Second. I have a motion and second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Jackie, please call the roll.
Ms. Peel?
Aye.
Mr. Rising?
Aye.
Ms. Demme?
Aye.
Ms. Grover?
Aye.
Ms. Donahue?
Aye.
Mr. Carrubas?
Yes.
Mr. Rayzac?
Aye. Motion passes. Congratulations, Stephen.
Steve, if you're watching online, welcome to Indian Prairie. All right, we'll move on. Our next position is for Kendall Elementary School. So as you know, Lena Guerrero is our current principal, is retiring at the end of this school year. So we're pleased to bring forward our recommendation for the next principal of Kendall Elementary, Bria Jager. Bria, and you are here, so I'm going to have you stand. Bria has served as the Student Services Coordinator at Patterson Elementary since 2016. Bria came to Indian Prairie with experience as an assistant principal in Yorkville and teaching experience at middle and high school in Colorado, Highland Park, and Yorkville. And we're very excited to recommend Bria Jager for your approval to the position of Principal at Kendall Elementary.
And I need a motion to approve Bria Jager as Principal at Kendall.
I move that we approve Bria Jager as Principal of Kendall Elementary as presented.
And do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and second. Any discussion? Hearing none. Jackie, please call the roll.
Ms. Demme?
Aye.
Ms. Donahue?
Aye.
Mr. Carrubas?
Yes.
Ms. Peel?
Aye.
Mr. Rayzac?
Aye.
Mr. Rising?
Aye.
Ms. Grover?
Yes.
Motion passes. Congratulations.
Congratulations. Your cheering section is elsewhere, right?
Yes, my family is at the Gregory Band Concert. They're celebrating there.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I'm very excited.
We're excited to have you. Okay, so our next position, speaking of Gregory, our next position is actually for Skullin Middle School. So we do want to acknowledge Leslie Mitchell, who is our current Skullin Middle School principal, is going to be moving over to Gregory, a middle school, to replace the retiring Steve Severson. So Leslie's here, so we'll let Leslie stand and congratulate her movement over to Gregory. But I think she's really here to support her current assistant principal. So as a result of Leslie moving over to Gregory, we're pleased to forward our recommendation for the next principal of Skullin Middle School, and that's Scott Lowridge. Stand up over there, Scott, and he does have a cheering section. Scott has been the Assistant Principal at Skullin, of Skullin Middle School.
And I need a motion for the board to approve Scott Lowridge as Principal at Skullin Middle School.
I move that the Board of Education approves Scott Lowridge as Principal at Skullin Middle School as presented.
Second. I have a motion and second. Any discussion? Hearing none. Jackie, please call the roll.
Ms. Donahue?
Aye.
Mr. Rising?
Aye.
Ms. Peel?
Aye.
Mr. Rayzac?
Aye.
Ms. Demme?
Aye.
Ms. Grover?
Aye.
Mr. Carrubas?
Yes.
Congratulations.
Scott, do you want to introduce your family or your cheering section?
Absolutely. I'm joined here by my daughter Molly and my wife Kate, and this is my daughter Bridget.
Congratulations.
Thanks, very excited.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Okay, one more. Finally, we have our recommendation for the next principal of Niqua Valley High School. As you know, Dr. McBride is moving on to the superintendency in Lockport District 205. In fact, he's at their board meeting tonight. Otherwise, I know he would be here. But to help cheer on Lance here, we're pleased to bring forward Dr. Lance Fuer as our recommendation for Principal of Niqua Valley. Lance began his career, his teaching career, at Wabonzi Valley and then moved over to Niqua Valley when it opened in 1997, and he has been there ever since as a teacher, department chair, and assistant principal. So we are excited to recommend Dr. Lance Fuer for your approval to the position of Principal, Niqua Valley High School.
And I need a recommendation for the board to approve Lance Fuer as Principal at Niqua Valley.
Make a motion that the Board of Education approve Lance Fuer as Principal of Niqua Valley High School as presented.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. Jackie, please call the roll.
Mr. Rising?
Aye.
Ms. Demme?
Aye.
Mr. Carrubas?
Yes.
Ms. Donahue?
Aye.
Mr. Rayzac?
Aye.
Ms. Grover?
Aye.
Ms. Peel?
Aye.
Motion passes. Congratulations.
Lance, I know you have some family here. You want to introduce them to everybody?
Yeah, this is my wife Sue, teaches at Matia Valley, sitting with some of our Mustang students. My daughter Annika, my son Anderson, and a great team of APs that I get the luck to still work with, so it's awesome. Thank you.
Congratulations. And that's it.
We now move to the consent agenda. I need a motion that the Board of Education approve consent agenda items H through N.
I make a move that the Board approve consent agendas, agenda items H through N as presented.
Second.
I have a motion and second. Any discussion? Hearing none. Jackie, call the roll, please.
Ms. Demme?
Aye.
Ms. Peel?
Aye.
Mr. Carrubas?
Yes.
Mr. Rayzac?
Aye.
Mr. Rising?
Aye.
Ms. Grover?
Aye.
Ms. Donahue?
Aye.
Motion passes. We do not have action items at this meeting, so we move to our discussion portion of our meeting. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. We'd like to continue the excitement of this evening with a discussion about World of Work. This is an instructional program that we have just started to implement this year. I think you heard a little bit about it mentioned before, but we wanted to share with you, now that we've got some pioneers working through it, we'd like to share a little bit about it with you. Our teachers here tonight represent three of our schools, our teachers and our principal represent three of our schools that have started the implementation and have taken a risk and started using it with students. We have two other schools, both Georgetown and Longwood, have also started looking into it as well. We're going to start, but I'm going to let everybody at the table introduce themselves and their role.
Brian Jovanini, Director of Elective Curriculum.
Tara Nordstrom, second grade teacher at Colashaw Elementary.
And Tara, tell them where.
204 alum, Nancy Young, Granger, Wabonzi.
Mmm. Throw your own duck.
Scott Nickel, I'm currently the project arrow teacher at Colashaw Elementary School.
Reynolds Cross, I'm the fourth grade teacher at McCarty Elementary.
Good evening, Jeremy Ricken, Principal at Gombert.
And I believe Mr. Schnabel is here, helping out, and Ken Bonomo as well, here to help support. So we're happy to have everybody here. The purpose of tonight is to provide you with some information about this engaging career awareness program titled World of Work. This connects directly to Board Policy 610, which really looks at what do we want for our students as they move forward. So this incorporates many different aspects of that policy, and Brian's going to talk to you a little bit about how it connects with both Portrait of a Graduate and our SEL competencies.
So we've seen both of these competencies and frameworks in the past couple of weeks and over the past couple of months as some focuses for this year, and really this World of Work instructional practice that we've seen at these elementary schools aligns to both of these. The first thing that a lot of our students do is they work with our teachers, really start to learn about those strengths, interests, and values of an individual student, where that student can kind of share their individual story and at the same time start talking about their dreams and challenges to kind of meet those initiatives. And that's really where students are starting to really build that self-awareness under the SEL competencies. And then as we start to look a little bit about the social awareness, they're starting to really learn about their individual classmates, too, and some of the things that they're interested in and their strengths are. And then as we look at the Portrait of a Graduate and we start looking at those competencies, the first thing that they do is really look for that, through that strengths grid, and each one of those is on there that a student can kind of identify and look through. And without stealing too much of the thunder as they talk about their experience with those, you're going to see these two kind of throughout the process and throughout the discussion tonight. So kind of keep your eyes open for some things that they highlight during their sessions.
Grant, I just talked a little bit about the program, how we learned of it and wanted to bring it back here to 204. So the program is, you know, full speed in Cajon Valley, out near San Diego, California. And last May, a number of the Title I principals, as well as Kathy and Joan, Laura, and Brian, we got to have the opportunity to go out there and visit with Ed Hidalgo, who created the program while he was at Qualcomm, and then brought that program with him to Cajon Valley, where he is now the Chief Innovation and Engagement Officer. So we went out, we got to spend a few days visiting classrooms out in Cajon Valley and seeing kids involved in World of Work activities. Ed gave us kind of an introduction when we got there, and his passion and energy for the program was just really infectious, and we just jumped right in and saw some classrooms. So we saw kids as young as kindergarten, as old as fifth grade, living the world of work, able to tell us all about their own strengths and interests and values, and experiencing different career opportunities and telling us about them. So we were in one classroom with kindergarten students. They were studying what it would be to farm, to be farmers. They had made some dioramas. They were able to tell us about everything from planting to harvesting to getting crops to the market, and they were five. It was really, really impressive. It was energetic for us. We were in talking to kids, and beyond that, five-year-olds telling us where their interests are, where their strengths are, and something that was just really impressive. And I remember when I was a kid, we all wanted to be firemen and policemen, I think. You know, we're kind of the big things. Noble professions, no doubt. Now they want to be YouTubers, if you ask the kids in the classrooms. That's not in the World of Work framework at the moment. But it was really impressive to see what they were doing. We saw some fourth graders studying marketing. And so, you know, the bundle of ads that you get, what, Wednesday or so in the mailbox? You bring them in and there's stuff for Domino's and KFC. Well, they had these KFC ads out, and the fourth graders are going through them and analyzing the print advertising. Does it look appetizing? Would I really pay $5 for this chicken and mashed potatoes meal? And so they're picking that apart and creating their own ads. And so I was thinking, I would have loved to have been able to experience things like that at their age and to know that there are other professions outside of the ones my parents are in or my kids, my friends' parents are in. And we were just, I personally thought it was really inspiring to be out there and see all that. And a couple of things that we heard, and I'll let the teacher show you what's going on here now that it's back here, words that struck me from Ed and some of the other teachers. And the first was that there's dignity in all work. You know, we really saw that as we visited, that through this program, we can truly alter the trajectory of a child's life, and through the program, these kids are finding their unique place in the world. So those are three things I thought about on the flight home since then and things now I think we're seeing in classrooms here. I'll let you guys talk about that.
I recently read a quote that said, instead of asking a kid what job they want to have, ask them what problem they want to solve. Instead of asking them where they want to work, ask them what skills that they'll need. Right now, we teach kiddos that are going to, they've set anywhere between in the 2000, year 2030, there'll be sixty to eighty percent of the jobs that aren't even created yet. I mean, you think about right now, some of the jobs that we have weren't created back in the day. And our kiddos right now come to us, and they don't really know who they are. You know, they ask for your approval, they ask to see what you think about them. You look at our work world. According to CBS, out of a hundred million people, fifty-one million people do not like their jobs. And you look at another sixteen million people are not actively engaged in their jobs. Why? Because they didn't have a choice. They didn't have a voice. And I think what we look at is the world of work. The world of work gives the kids both that, choice and voice. When I look at my kiddos, I see, I've got a kid in my class right now that can code the Knight Rider theme. He was telling me about that. I've got kiddos that are going to be the next presidents, lawyers, but it's got to start with some kind of groundwork. So the moment we heard about World of Work, we hit the ground running, because number one, what is most important in that classroom is the kiddo's social, emotional well-being, understanding who they are in the world and that they matter. And it has been awesome to start with their understanding, and you're going to hear from the other members that are talking, to see what are your strengths? And to really understand through different activities that what we think are our strengths might not be, to understand what skills they bring to the table and how those skills, even though they're necessarily great in one thing, those skills can bring so much. And the most important part was the values. We talk in class and look at, what do you value? Do you value a $300 million contract and your people that you work with don't really appreciate you? Or do you value family? Do you value relationships? So what we've looked at is, in our classroom, we've hit the ground running. We've gone through self-discovery, in which students have really picked apart through different activities, different STEM activities, using technology, just interactions, just to say, I don't have to be the one that talks awful. I'm not social. Hey, I'm more the conventional type. I'm going to kind of organize the conversation. To then really exploring, well, okay, I want to be a teacher. What does that really look like? Understanding, you know, is there a job market for it? You know, how much education would you need? What type of skills would you need? And then really, we've, and we'll talk about a little bit later, is connecting with the world and actually seeing people. We've met, and we'll talk a little later about, people that work at zoos and people that have built roller coasters that we've actually ridden on. So looking at that whole component is, it's all about the kiddos finding their place in the world and understanding that they're awesome and that they bring so many valuable skills, and these skills are going to lead to them being someone in the world.
So kind of bouncing off of Scott, a huge part of World of Work is the self-awareness piece. And the RIASEC is the codes that they use to explore their interests and really see what are they interested in, what are they good at, how they can apply this to future careers. So we have had, in my classroom, what we call RIASEC parties. Call anything a party, they get really into it. They explore different things that fit in each category to see if they actually fit into this. And some of my kids, they got to the artistic section, they're like, oh, I'm not artistic. But then they got to take pictures, they got to color, they got to paint, explore that, and they realize, wow, I'm actually really good at this. Or I didn't know music could be artistic. So really, realistic are like the doers, the hands-on type of people. Investigative are the thinkers, so they like to do research and investigate things. Artistic, they're the artists. Social are the helpers, so like doctors or teachers, they like to help others. Enterprising feeds into like the persuaders. And then we have conventional are organizers. So one of my students, they got to this and they were just, can I organize your books? I'm like, absolutely, you can organize my books. So it's really just feeding into what they are interested in and understanding like, okay, I like to talk to people. I could be a teacher, they like to help people. Or maybe I like to do hands-on activities and I want to work outside, so that's realistic. I could be a farmer. So it's really just digging deep into what they're interested in and their strengths and their values and understanding, what can I do with these and how can I figure out what I want to do in the future? And just through World of Work, exposing the kids to several different careers, just having conversations with the kids about what their parents do. Sometimes I've had a conversation with one of my students, and they didn't know what these different careers, what a civil engineer is, because someone's father was a civil engineer. So then that sparked conversations about what are these different careers? And normally, we wouldn't bring this up, so this has really just exposed the kids to a lot of different things. Currently, in my class, in second grade, we're exploring fitness trainer. And we had a fitness trainer come in and demonstrate things, and they're like, what a fitness trainer's a job! Like, it's just really opening their eyes to different opportunities and how they can use their strengths, interests, and values and figure out what they want to do with their futures.
So my experience with World of Work that I started this year, after my students went through different, finding their strengths, interests, and values, we created Me Trees. And I'm actually going to bring up, have someone bring up a few to share what they look like. So we incorporated, the roots of the trees are their values and their strengths, and the trunk of the tree are their three interests, their top three interests. And then they set goals for themselves and challenges that might get in the way of those goals. And some of the students set short-term goals as well as long-term goals. So they have like, I want to be a doctor, or I want to get good grades, and different things along the way, but they first had to learn about themselves and know who they are. And that self-awareness piece and that social, emotional learning throughout the way of learning who they are to then help each other and figure out what similarities they have between other students and what similar interests they have or similar strengths or maybe differences between students. So we started with Me Trees after we found out their strengths, interests, and values, and that really kind of sprung off what we were going to do next. And we recently just researched about what an entrepreneur is, and the students, they researched and then they came up with their own business plan. And they decided, they created their own business for themselves and came up with an advertisement for what their business was going to be. And actually, today, we had a live chat through what's called NEFRIS, and I think Scott's going to talk a little bit more about that, but we were able to talk with an entrepreneur who is actually from San Diego, but we were able to talk to him, my students were able to ask questions, and we were able to learn more from not just the researching part, but then actually meeting a pro and learning from them. So it was that one-on-one personal experience that they were able to get. And it's just those students that you grow up thinking like, okay, I might want to be a teacher or a firefighter, but we're exposing them to these careers that they may not have heard of before and different things that are new to them and things that haven't even been created yet. So giving them that exposure piece of different opportunities that they may not have ever known is really opening them up to learning about themselves, too.
And whatever strengths or values they have are okay. That's all right. You're all okay, and you're all going to find your place. Part of World of Work, the goal is to, by the end of fifth grade, that students will have explored fifty-four different careers. So we're not there yet, but that's part of the goal. Did either of you want to share anything else? the goal. Um, did either of you want to share anything else? You want to talk about NEFRIS?
Absolutely. Um, we were very blessed to be able to have a subscription to NEFRIS. And basically what NEFRIS is, it's a database in which students can, number one, research jobs. It breaks down, um, as we talked about the RIASEC model, what skills you would need, what strengths, what kind of college education, is the job trending, you know, what to look at. And it also allows us the opportunity to actually submit proposals to meet with individuals. For instance, we have gotten to meet with people with an individual that, uh, was a zookeeper at San Antonio. She actually invited our kids, um, to come there and sleep by the hippos. My kids, as soon as they finished talking, were like, all right, I think it's six thousand dollars ago. We're like, um, one kid's like, uh, we need to travel, we need to travelocity or do something like that.
Were they searching the reservations already on their
Right, right. I said, you're not the trip advisor anymore, sir. No, but what we've done, we have upcoming, we're going to meet with a chef on, uh, my fifth grader students will meet with a chef on Thursday. And what happens is, you know, we've gotten to meet with a roller coaster designer, um, graphic designer. And I have asked my kiddos, I said, my fourth and fifth grade students, I said, who do you want to meet? And you know, somebody's like, oh, a graphic designer. I want to see, because I'm interested in animation. And it's interesting, because, um, the people, uh, talk right from their house, and they share so much excitement. The graphic designer that we spoke to was like, oh yeah, I did a promotion for Bath and Body Works. And my kids were like, oh, they, I did, I did something for the Utah Jazz. You know, one of the, one of those, uh, share the, it was kind of a fun advertisement. So when we have these sessions, uh, students are actively looking on Google Classroom. They're using Google Earth, too. So like, okay, where is this at? Do you see that they have rhinoceroses? Wow, that's a pretty big zoo. I can see this. Let's ask about this. And they generate the questions. They come up and ask the individuals. Like, the, the picture that's up there, that is the young lady that worked at the San Antonio Zoo. Now, she is the one, uh, that's in charge of, uh, booking the zoo appointments with teachers. So my kids ask, and they're curious, you know, what's your hardest part about your job? And she was so good with them. She said, teachers. And my kids all looked at me, and I was like, go ahead, ask more. They're like, what about teachers? And they're like, sometimes they don't always listen and follow directions, and sometimes they get mad at us because they thought they paid things. With the individual there, they asked her about, okay, we love your artwork in the back. Can you tell us a bit more about that? We noticed you have an exercise ball in the back. We just spoke with a young lady from Utah, um, and we were talking with her, and, uh, asking, uh, what did you want to be when you grew up? A soccer player. So all my kids are like, yeah. And my kid has a soccer jersey on. So it's interesting, it's, it builds the relationship, and you see the kids' excitement. And every time teachers tell me, and they're running out of the room, we met someone famous, we met someone famous. I was like, do you know they're just like us every single day? So I mean, the ability to make that connection. And what we've tied into two, you know, you have kids that are asking you, I, this is what I want to be when I grow up. It's really said, it's really opened up ideas, too. Like, the graphic designer told us, she's not just a drawer. She could be animation, she could be different things for books. And what allows kids to be interested in, I'm going to go pursue that job more. So it's been an awesome experience to make that connections with people all around the world.
So our next steps are to obviously continue to support our teachers that are up here, and their colleagues who are working with World of Work in their schools right now, and the principals who are doing amazing work, uh, on a daily basis to expose our students their strengths, interests, and values, and some of those careers that we talked about a little bit. And then, um, we invite you, Ed Hidalgo, who is the orchestrator behind World of Work, will be coming out the, the week of April twenty-second, uh, to do another professional development for our teachers to kind of share their story. He gives you the, kind of the why behind it, tells a little bit about his story. And you will leave going, wow, that is amazing. He is a, uh, very passionate, and really tells his story really, really well. And so we invite you to come and join us. And we're going to have some additional teachers. Um, our teachers up here had an opportunity to share with, um, some colleagues at our last institute day. And the sessions were packed, and really just wanted to learn more about it. So we're going to invite some more teachers out that week of April twenty-second. So please come join us.
So I first want to thank, you could see how passionate our teachers are, um, and like to thank these five schools for being pioneers for us, um, and moving forward with this. This is a great, uh, program for kids. Uh, we'd invite you to come visit one of the classrooms and see for yourselves, and, uh, be wowed, uh, by the, by what the students will tell you about who, how they know themselves, and how that can fit, um, into what they want to do. So at this time, we'd be happy to answer questions.
Questions?
I have a question. Um, so you're teaching World of Work, but what part of the day is this happening, or is this throughout the day? How, how does that look?
That's why we're so excited about these teachers, because they're helping us figure that out. But if you wanted to share a little bit about how you see it fitting?
Um, so as of now, it's just kind of been taking time out of our day to really get, it's so important for the kids to understand their strengths, interests, and values. So it's kind of been a little disconnected, where we just set aside time for World of Work. Um, but just looking at the specific careers, like specifically, I teach second grade. So, um, one of the careers is a chef. So our next science unit coming up is with life, life science and plants. So we're going to actually like plant some basil, and then hopefully get them exploring what a chef does, and you have them plant and grow something, and use it to cook something. So it's integrating it into the curriculum, um, over the summer, really looking at that, to see how these careers can fit, especially with the science and social studies. Um, just looking already, it's huge. Um, just when you're looking at books for reading, you could talk about, what, um, does a character, how do they fit in the RIASEC? So just really, um, starting to incorporate it into the curriculum, um, is the goal.
Okay.
We've seen a lot of teachers kind of work with the Makerspaces at their buildings, too. Some of these careers have a direct connection to what, what they have in the LMC. So they've done a really nice job with that, uh, to kind of build some connections there.
And with learning about the entrepreneur, we, um, related it to social studies, and learning about goods and services. And so when we were learning about, and we asked the entrepreneur today, is your business a good, or does it provide a good, or does it, is it a service? And so they were relating it back to social studies, and incorporating it through that, too.
I kind of gleaned that there's a vertical nature of this curriculum, like K through five. So each grade level have like a specific area, and, because I'm assuming those trees will change every year as interests and people get more aware of different, uh, jobs, and kids begin to understand theirselves. So can you describe what like K-five looks like, just like real briefly?
Well, there are fifty-four careers that are sprout out across all, uh, through K through five. And so the careers bring with them different conversations, and different, um, different avenues to explore. I, I think what happens is, over time, uh, you get to dig deeper kindergarteners' words, and how much they can understand and discuss are going to be different than, uh, the students in Scott's fifth grade classroom. So I think as we move forward, the vocabulary about the RIASEC will become more familiar. So maybe Tara and Reynolds won't have to spend as much time, um, learning the RIASEC, but using it, and being able to connect it, and help kids make more connections. So I think it's like anything else, once we develop the systemic vocabulary, and have kids build on that understanding, then we can just continue to go deeper.
I appreciate hearing from the teachers. A lot of energy, a lot of excitement, a lot of smiles. So sitting on the board, sometimes you hear bu- budget presentations. And it's not always the, it's not always the smiles and stuff.
Maintenance.
Right. I can tell you guys are passionate and love what you're doing, and that comes across. So thank you.
Yeah, I, I love the sound of this program. I wish it was available when I was a kid. So I can just imagine how exciting, I ended up in a career as an engineer, and had no exposure to engineering when I was young. So I just think this is fantastic. So thank you so much.
Yeah, I'll echo the same thing. I mean, I love that we're not only allowing them to discover who they are, and what some of their roots are, if you will, from the Giants. Um, but just that awareness, and watching their peers, too, discover who they are. Because I think, when you can, when you can observe that, it makes you more empathetic a, as a person, and it just feeds into that social emotional learning, which I love. Um, and then thank you for also, you know, bringing that up. And I think we should continue to reinforce how there's dignity in all work, and, uh, in all skills, no matter what you do. And I just hope a lot of those kids who decided they want to be teachers, that are really at second grade, still want to do that, because we're facing teacher shortages. So, um, I just, you know, I, I think we need to, uh, and I'm sure you guys have this conversation, I'm sure they look up to you as teachers, uh, we just need to foster that in them, too. So, thank you.
Well, you hit the SEL component, social emotional learning, right on the head, is the empathy is developed, but also an appreciation for others' strengths, instead of fighting against them, or, uh, becoming a conflict. There's an appreciation about how we can help and support each other. And that's one of the things that you see in their classrooms, um, as they've been working through it. So you're exactly right about that.
Kathy, you hit on the, um, talking about recognizing and appreciating other strengths. I think it's, one of the things I think is so fantastic, is helping the students to even recognize their strengths. That's not something that historically, we, we ever talked about at that age level. So, I mean, that's fantastic. You talk about self-awareness, and that's just so important. And it's, it's with all, that our kids are dealing with these days, that's, it's fantastic to, um, to, to build that self-esteem and self-confidence in them. I had a quick question. Makerspaces, uh, I know we had them at Title I schools. Have we been able to move them into?
We have them in all of our, uh, LMCs. And in fact, we just, uh, through the foundation, IPEF, we gave them a base. You know, we gave them all a kit, and the, uh, individual schools have expanded those Makerspaces beyond, um, to just that simple kit. So the, you know, it's just fascinating what they can do, and the connections they can make there.
Anybody else?
Yeah, I, I'm just really happy that you're starting this at the elementary level, because I know, like for my kid, they were in high school when they first took that test about what they wanted to be. And by then, it's kind of a little late. So it's great that you're starting this at the elementary level. So in middle school, they can kind of figure out, and then they can join particular clubs, or whatever. So, thank you.
You know, we really look at it as, um, anymore as our responsibility to help them understand what's available to them. And, uh, you know, even just, Mike and I were talking with Karen and Clayton before, and just talking about what I like, but also what I don't like. Like, this is not fun for me. So I don't, I hope, I'm not going to do that, is equally as important, as Clayton was saying, as finding out what you, what you do want to do.
And I had an opportunity to meet Ed for a very short period of time, and he talked about wellness. And he talked about being happy, and being in that job, and that fifty-one-thousand-dollar, fifty-one thou, fifty-one percent of the people are not happy with their job. And if we can get more people happy with their job, that addresses what you said, is that social emotional well-being. And I think that's really, really important, that, you know, there's career wellness also, in which you're happy with your job, happy with your family, you know. It extends beyond just being successful in one area. So I, I thought, when I heard that, I was excited to bring that program here.
Just have a quick thing.
Karen met him at, um, one of the, uh, Digital Promise, League of Innovative Schools meetings, and then just started talking. And then, you know, we jumped on, and Laura, and Joan, and Brian came and said, okay, yeah, let's, let's work with this. And then we had some principals, and now we have teachers. So it is, um, has been a wonderful testament to how that can work, and how something so wonderful can just, people can just carry it and move it forward faster than we even projected it would be.
Natasha?
Yeah, I was just going to ask, do you, can you maintain a log of all the career people that you are using, so that you can share it with the other schools, and things like that? So we don't have to go?
Yes. What happens with NEFRIS is after you record, uh, after the, each, each of the sessions is recorded, so it goes back in their database. And then, as a teacher, I get an email a couple of days later, because they have to kind of blank out the kiddo's faces. And then those are on that database, so anybody that has a NEFRIS, um, subscription can have that. So we actively share. I talked to Tara, I was like, hey, we talked to so-and-so. You might want to check this person out. And so we're actively having that conversations in there. And when we get a chance to meet, you know how it is, collaboration's the best. You're like, oh, did you talk to this person? This person was the absolute best. It's kind of like Real World, you know, you need a painter, and you talk to who's the best person. Yeah, that's our, that's our goal as, as teachers, to share and make it open.
No, I, I'm just, I was impressed, I was impressed with the trees, and I was impressed with the words on the trees. I was like, how do they know what they're meant? Um, it's just so impressive, and it's exciting, exciting, um, that we're going in this direction. Love it.
Anyone else?
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And now, and now, we move to the budget forecast.
We can pay for programs, like.
And it appears, Mr. Strang, you have to smile at least three times during the budget forecast.
That's right. Where's that enthusiasm, Mr. Strang?
I love my job.
Which part of it don't you love, though?
Going second after presentations like that. Thank you, board members. This is the second forecast, um, of the spring. The last one was a month ago. And, and I'd like to tell you that there's a lot of changes, but there's not many changes at all, which, you know, I think is probably a good thing, particularly when you're dealing with the state of Illinois. But we'll, uh, we'll go through this, and I'll show you what's changed, and where we're headed next, um, with our forecast as a school district. Now, the assumptions have not changed. Um, so the property taxes, the property values, the consumer price index, uh, what we're expecting to get from the state and the federal government has not changed, because we've not heard anything really from, um, Springfield or Washington. The financial forecast did change slightly, um, and that was some work that we're continuing to, um, talk about in the superintendent's cabinet around evidence-based funding. And we'll go about that a little bit, and then our future activities. As was before, uh, our property assumptions are pretty strong. The economy has picked up, and, um, property growth, new EAV growth, that's new buildings that are coming to the district, are coming on faster than they did certainly during the Great Recession. Last year, we received eighty and a half million dollars worth of new property, which was outstanding. We actually received more money in tax revenue from new property than we did in existing property. Conservatively, in the red, you can see that in nineteen and twenty, um, predicting, forecasting fifty-five million dollars in new property. And then in twenty-one, twenty-two, and twenty-three, forty-five million dollars in new property. With the conversations that we're hearing from the cities of Aurora and Naperville, and with the developers contacting me, I can tell you that, that's a conservative number. Every ten million dollars worth of new property represents about five-hundred-thousand dollars worth of revenue for the school district. So if that fifty-five million is sixty-five million, we're going to see a five-hundred-thousand-dollar increase in this forecast as we build the budget. On the upside, our existing EAV, the property that's already in your, your homes, others' homes, the, uh, car dealerships and the Dairy Queens, that property value has been increasing. And that is also a very positive thing. And it's been increasing at four-point-seven percent, three and a half percent, last year, three percent. And I'm conservatively, conservatively saying that it'll increase at three and a half percent going forward. When you add those two together, what's our total, total EAV change? How much does our property values increase? Uh, you can see that they increased a total of six-point-zero-eight percent in two thousand and eighteen. That's a pretty good number, that spike in blue there down on the bottom left. And then four-point-seven and four-point-five percent. Um, when our property values exceed the consumer price index, tax rates fall. Folks are still paying their property taxes, and they're paying the CPI increase. But because their tax rate falls, they're, they think that they're paying less to the school districts, when in fact, they're, they are paying more. It's just their home values are going up faster than, than the increases that we add to the taxes as a school district. What does that mean to our total EAV? Um, we're at five-point-five billion dollars worth of total EAV. And in this forecast, when you look all the way out to twenty-twenty-three, um, if, if these numbers hold, and I, again, I think they're conservative, we'll have six-point-eight billion dollars worth of total property, uh, in the district. The, the one thing that we talked about last week, that is something that is a new initiative for us, and it's a part of the new funding formula down at the state of Illinois, is evidence-based funding. And, um, as we've talked about before, they take the characteristics of your school district, um, the makeup of your students, the needs of your students, the makeup of your staff, how your staff support those students. And they compare that against every other district in the state of Illinois, and they come up with a funding level that you should be at to implement all of these twenty-seven elements. We are short on implementing all of those twenty-seven elements. We're a Tier Two district, we'll be short on implementing all of those elements for quite some time. But they are moving more money towards us, and so we are, um, taking that money and starting to putting into some of these areas. There's no script, there's no rule, there's nothing that says it has to go in one area or another. But at some point in time, um, they're going to want to know where we put the money, and whether or not we saw any, um, effect on the kids in the district, and whether or not we've seen increased scores, and the kids have, are, are learning at a quicker pace. I can tell you that the superintendent's cabinet, and members of the leadership services team have met, and it looks like right now, we're, we're looking at the core FTE areas. We, the first place that we took, uh, the last place that we tried to take, um, make reductions when we were going through the Great Recession, was the classrooms. We wanted to hold off on the classrooms the last. We know that those teachers are the most important. So I, I think the discussions are starting to settle around putting some resources back into the classrooms. Um, whether or not that's K-one, two, or, um, specialist, uh, that's to be determined in those conversations. We'll come back to you in the next couple of weeks. To support that, um, all of the school districts are trying to put together, um, an idea of where they actually fall with the evidence-based funding elements and the need. And, um, we've been working with Forecast Five, and a number of other districts to look at our data, and to run our data to what Forecast Five data says we should receive. And what you can see on this chart, now this is the evidence-based funding picture of Indian Prairie School District from fiscal year eighteen, what funding picture of, uh, Indian Prairie School District from fiscal year eighteen, what they said we should be funded at in fiscal year eighteen. When this model was put together, um, fiscal year eighteen numbers weren't completed yet because we hadn't had our audit, so it's fiscal year seventeen numbers. So, there's, there's anomalies in this, but it does show you a trend, and that is that we are, for the most part, under-resourced in areas. And you can see in the green is where evidence-based funding says we should be, and in the yellow, you can see where we are. And you've got assistant principals, you've got core instructional teachers, you've got English language teachers, guidance counselors, instructional facilitators, um, librarians, nurses, principals, psychologists, uh, pupil support personnel, regular education teachers and special education teachers. As we've worked in the last, um, year and the presentation that we gave to the board a couple of months ago, we've really, um, tightened up our, um, position control numbers, how we identify where teachers are placed. And we've tightened up our, um, account codes in the business office so that we're as accurate as we possibly can be in identifying where staff are at. So, as we build this out in the future, it will be much more accurate. It's safe to say that our numbers will still be low in areas, but they may shift a little bit between the bars. There's also some work being done to look at other components of the elements as well. But this is a good visual, it kind of shows you, you know, where we're at as a school district and, um, where we're at compared to some of our comparable districts. If we, if I was to pull this data up, uh, using Five Cast and look at our comparable districts, you can see where we're at with assistant principals compared to our comparable districts, where we're at with, um, librarians to our comparable districts, where we're at in class size to our comparable, comparable districts and so forth. So, this work continues, and I think it's going to be something that we'll, we'll bring up. And I think it's something the superintendent's cabinet will look at as, you know, decisions are made about how do we move some of those resources back into the classroom.
Jay, um, a couple of quick questions. And Karen, I'm not sure if a, a couple may need to come to you, but as I look, um, can you share that instructional facilitator, um, area? And on the nurse area, um, the support staff shows a little bit, but can you just speak to the fact that we're not showing any actual staffing level there, although we do have staff?
Yeah. Yeah. So, if you look down at the special education teachers in that fiscal year, nurses, speech pathologists, um, uh, and, um, other resources were grouped with the special education teachers. So, it says that we should have thirty-four nurses, if you, you look down to the, it's kind of small there, the bar graph. We had forty-one nurses, uh, that were serving the, um, the, the nurse office, the health office. We had a dozen or so nurses that were one-on-one, um, nurses with students with significant needs that they followed all day long. And then we've got another dozen or so nurses that are certified school nurses that are, um, um, kind of the nurse leaders who are also involved in the child find process, work with kids who have disabilities or are getting identified with, with special needs. So, across the district, we had just over sixty nurses.
And then instructional facilitator?
You know, I don't have an answer for instructional facilitators.
We don't, because we only have a couple that are here at the district level. We don't have, um, coaches, instructional, sometimes they're called instructional.
Okay.
Facilitators or coaches, instructional coaches, those positions.
For staff? Does that, was it coaches for staff?
Right.
Yeah.
So, we think these num, these numbers will be, we think, more accurate moving forward because of the work that we've done in the office to change our accounts, to, um, reflect the school-based budgeting that they're requiring of us. So, this was from previous data.
Just for clarification, so, I haven't lo, I, I, obviously, I knew the indicators that evidence-based funding was based off of, but it sounds like there's some ramifications of how those positions are calculated or counted. Um, i- is, is that what I'm understanding? I, I mean, 'cause, 'cause here you say how many nurses we have, but it, we're not even a blip on the graph. Uh, is that because?
Yeah, this is.
Okay.
And this is separate from our reporting to, um, the state of Illinois.
Okay.
This is, this is an attempt to put together graphics that show a data that you're pulling from one source and another source and combining them together.
Okay.
Thank you for that clarification.
Uh, on our operating funds, as I said last time, that we'd go away from a five-year forecast and narrow it down to a three-year forecast. Um, nothing has changed with our revenue. Um, you can see that we're, in fiscal year twenty, are looking at three hundred and fifty-seven million, one hundred and six thousand, five hundred and forty-eight dollars. Uh, that increases to three hundred and sixty-five point nine million and then three hundred and seventy-four point eight million dollars. Um, when you look down at our expenditures, though, you will see a change. I moved two million dollars more into salaries for fiscal year twenty. Uh, that turns into two million and seventy thousand dollars in fiscal year twenty-one and two million and seventy-four thousand dollars in fiscal year twenty-two. And it represents thirty FTE. And that is the discussion that's occurring with, um, Dr. Sullivan and members of the cabinet, and how are we going to use those FTEs to impact some change, uh, in the schools.
Total or per year?
Ongoing. Thirty the first year that would carry on the second and third. That's not to say that is, if additional evidence-based funding becomes available in twenty-one, like it should, that you shouldn't be growing that.
Okay.
If that makes sense.
So, to be clear for the audience, that's thirty additional headcount approximately in the district.
That is correct.
And FTE means full-time employee.
Correct. Um, what it does is it, it takes our excess or deficit down. Um, you could see that in twenty, we're expecting an excess of seven hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars. In twenty-one, a million and five, and we're showing a slight deficit in twenty-two. That's with all of the assumptions that we've got into place here. Now, I've already told you that I think my new property numbers are light, and that if they come in ten million dollars higher than I thought, there'd be an extra five hundred thousand dollars there. I can tell you that our grants for special education have been coming in a little higher than we've seen. So, I expect that all of those numbers, you know, at the end of the day, will be better than this. So, that's a good thing. The other thing you can see is that our fund balance to revenue ratio remains the same. That's the thing that the state looks at for our, our economic health, that we're not spending beyond our capacity. And you can see that it's, uh, at thirty-two point five percent this year. It's going to be at thirty-one point four, thirty-one, and thirty percent. Um, as we go out, the numbers always get a little difficult because you're going further out. And as we get closer to those years, when, um, when there's a forecast that's built in fiscal year twenty-one, um, those numbers in twenty-two, because it'll be the next year, will be much stronger numbers and, and, uh, will change a little bit. Our non-operating funds represents, uh, our bonds paying off our schools and our Fund Sixty capital outlay. Um, the revenue has not changed in those columns from the last forecast, our capital outlay and expenditures. Uh, we are hoping to use two million dollars each year to get some of our caught up, work caught up across the district for our facilities. In addition to that, in each of those years, uh, the capital maintenance and outlay budget in Fund Twenty is closer to the recommendation from the consultant who came into the district. So, we'll be spending, uh, in the neighborhood of seven and nine million dollars each of those years on capital outlay. Um, and the difficulty now is, um, you know, getting all that work done during the construction season and making sure that we, we're, um, getting all of that taken, taken place. Um, the, uh, final payment of the, um, twenty-five acres is factored in here. And, uh, in two thousand and twenty-seven, um, all of our bonds will be paid off and we'll have an opportunity then to really, uh, discuss and, and talk with the board about the opportunity to do some things differently in the district for the first time in a long time when we've paid off our, our school buildings.
Jay, a quick question. Sorry. Um, our ever, uh, conversation about, uh, air conditioning. Where do we, as far as this is concerned, where do we fall as far as that, what are we looking like?
Yeah, that's seven and nine million dollars. A portion of that is going to air conditioning, and, and I believe Todd believes he can get it done in the next two years. Are, are we still on track for that, Todd?
Yes, well, uh, the classrooms will be finished this year in August. And then the, uh, the scope of work for the libraries is going to take a two years. We can't get it all done in one, one summer.
But our, our classrooms are going to be done in, by the end of two thousand and twenty-one?
By the end of August.
By the, it's, gosh, wow. Okay. Fantastic.
Um, we're continuing to look at the assumptions. Uh, there are two things that are happening down in Springfield, um, that I'm paying attention to, and both of those are two separate ways to shift pensions on school districts. They have gone back to the discussion about phasing in pension, uh, expenses to school districts over a period of time. And that could be, you know, a half a percent or two percent or, you know, um, four percent a year. Uh, the lighter that they sock it to us each year, the longer it'll take. They're not going to want to drag that on for too long. Um, but I can't imagine that they're going to give us, you know, a two percent or a four percent pension cost shift in a year because it'd be too difficult to assume. The other is that there's some discussion about baking the pension expenses into evidence-based funding formula. Um, and there's a group out there that is, uh, championing that. We're going to hear about it at the ledge of, slate of Edu, Education Network at DuPage, uh, this Friday. Uh, and we're going to see that presentation. Um, it, the first thing that I pick up on about baking the, um, pension cost shift into evidence-based funding is that it, it takes it away from the spirit of that whole bill. The spirit of that bill was that no districts will lose. And if you put pension cost shift in that, we know that districts pay folks at different salary rates, and we know that some districts pay for the pensions and others don't pay for the pensions. And districts that are wealthy are going to end up taking a bigger hit of the pension cost shift. Now, do I think that's equitable? Maybe I think that's okay. But it's against the spirit of evidence-based funding that no district would lose. Because even the tier four districts, the wealthiest districts, are still receiving some additional money under evidence-based funding.
Do you, do you really, Jay, though, think, I, I just have a hard time believing they're going to push down the pensions because the state just took on CPS's pensions two years ago and their unfunded pension liability. So, it's like, the state just took upon CPS's pensions, but now we're going to push all the pensions back out to everybody? I mean, it, it seems a little contradictory, but I, I don't know. Crazier things have happened in this state.
The state has never treated Chicago and everyone else equally. So, when...
So, they'll push down everybody else's and keep paying Chicago's?
So, yeah. So, it's, you know, they've always treated the, the two differently. Um, they're looking at a number of other things to bail the district, the state out. I think ultimately, they're going to have to do something with pensions. They're going to continue to fund evidence-based funding like they plan to, at three hundred and fifty million dollars a year for the next, uh, decade or so. There's no way that they can come up that, with that money any other way. So, at some point, something's going to happen. Um, I'm guessing that in the next forecast or at some point in the near future, I think we're, I, I think conversations are getting pretty close on where we're going to land with evidence-based funding and where we're going to put those thirty FTEs. So, um, not sure who's going to be up here talking about it. Could be me. But we'll be talking about, um, where those FTEs are going and what kind of change, uh, we expect to affect across the district. Um, I'm going to continue to update the Board of Education regarding changes that occur, whether it's in a presentation or, or board memos. But, um, it's the point in time down in Springfield, between now and May, things really start to pick up and move pretty quickly. So, we'll be watching that. And then we were moving this forecast into a, um, draft and tentative budget, um, early summer. And, um, be landing this big ship. Any questions?
Mr. Krueger's, uh, looking at slide three. New E, new EAV growth. So, top left, it's showing that we had eighty million dollars in new EAV growth. Um, that was done without any economic incentives, um, from any cities, correct?
Yes, sir. That is correct.
Looking at, uh, existing EAV percentage change in the top right, showing increases of three percents. If there was a TIF that freezes the EAV change for that particular property, correct? I really like this slide number five. I think that's a great visual. Gives us, uh, I don't know, maybe I'm more of a visual person, but gives us a great way to compare some of these, uh, numbers. We are, um, eighty percent of adequacy, um, on our funding. And looking at, uh, the Illinois report card, it would take, uh, what is it? About seventy million dollars to bridge that gap. So, I know this doesn't include all of, um, the factors.
Correct.
But if we were to try to fill all the, all the green with all the yellow, minus the other factors that aren't on here, that would take seventy million dollars.
That's correct.
Thank you.
And can I add that some of our comparable districts can fill all of that green and have money left over right now?
I'm aware of that.
A lot of other people might not be.
Others?
I echo, um, Justin. I really liked, uh, slide five. That, that visual comparison really, um, really sinks in for me. So, I really appreciate that. And I just had a comment. Uh, I just really wanted to, to thank you for the conservatism on, on our budget and, and the work because, uh, you know, making sure that our fund balances, we keep within where we, uh, you know, uh, should be and, and, um, and exceed is, is extremely positive, uh, for us as we're trying to showcase the things that we are doing in this district. And then, uh, it's always nice with that conservative look to find ourselves the next year, two years out. Okay, there's some things that we weren't anticipating or hadn't, didn't have on paper, and now we can see what we can do. So, I really appreciate that.
I like slide five, too, but I'm worried a little bit because if someone doesn't understand the trouble we're having coding or that this data was from last year, they're, they're going to look at that and go, oh, my God, in two oh four, they don't have any nurses. They don't have, you know, and they're like way overstaffed on, you know, the, the bottom area. And it's like, that isn't the right message either. So...
Yeah. I can tell you that every one of our comparable districts looks exactly the same. Different...
People don't know, though. They'll look at the chart and pick it up and run with it. So...
So, so now, though, with the, the, the change in the, the account coding, this would look...
And our position control numbers.
Okay. So, this would look different.
Right. If, if I'm a third grade teacher and I'm teaching half of my time in regular math and half of my time in project arrow math, now I'm getting coded to fifty percent in each as opposed to a full-time in one or the other.
So, we just, so, um, I, and that's where I had, that's why I had the question or to get that kind of clarification.
There's still going to be more green.
Yeah.
Wow.
Could you, um, Jay, I asked you about the minimum wage increases that are going on over there. And you said you have factored that into the budget forecast as of today. So, can you tell us a little bit about that? What's, what's the factor of it?
Yeah, the minimum wage impact really won't hit us until the fourth and then the fifth year of the impact. And in the fifth year, when we bump up against that fifteen dollars, we're going to have to add about a million and a half dollars to the budget to pay for those folks. And then we, the other pieces, we've got to analyze, how many people are they going to bump into and adjust those folks up? So, it could be as much as three million dollars.
Okay. And that's not until the fifth year of it?
Yes.
Two thousand and twenty-five or something.
Right.
And Jay, just because some people may not, it's because they're talking about and it will be phased in. The fifteen would...
That's exactly right.
Hit all in the first year. It'll be a phase in.
That's exactly right.
Anyone else? Thank you, Mr. Strain.
I'd like to conclude that I saw a smirk.
And a smile.
All right. Finishes with a smile. Good.
My update is very brief. Um, as you heard, there's a Lend meeting on the twenty-second. Also, you saw Dr. Sullivan say that on April, and her memo to us that April third, Lend is also having, which is the Legislative Education Network of DuPage, is having a day in Springfield in which you meet with legislators and talk with them. And so, there's still, I think, room to go. Um, I'm going to make it down. I know it's the day after the election. And I want to thank our high school students, and I want to thank our Boy Scouts for being here today. But I'm going to give you one more task in terms of civic responsibility. And that is, if you're a high school student and you're a voting age, please vote. Boy Scouts mostly probably are not a voting... Boy Scouts mostly probably are not a voting age, but make sure, this is the assignment, that they vote on April second.
Their parents?
Their parents. Yes, their parents. Because if you sat here in this meeting, and you might not have noticed it, but they said it really briefly, the people up here control three hundred and fifty-seven million dollars of your parents' money. Most of that, although we get it from a lot of sources, most of it comes from their property taxes. You probably saw them probably kitting their head once or twice, saying, why is my property tax so high? Most of it is to pay for the great schooling that occurs in District two oh four. So this is their opportunity. There have been five candidates who have been running for a school board. They could also vote for councilmen and aldermen, either in Aurora and mayor. But I know our school board members, some of them are running. There are five great candidates. They need to get, they need to learn about the candidates and vote on April second, because it's really important. Believe it or not, less than fifteen to sixteen percent of the eligible voters will vote in April. And it's one of the, it's one of the benefits of living in a democracy. And yet, only sixteen percent of the people in this area, if that many, will vote. And we control a lot of things, so it's important for the public to choose who they think is best to serve that, our community. So please, if nothing else, if they ask you, what did you get out of this today, don't say nothing. Say, Mom and Dad, I want you to vote on April second. Thanks, guys. Do I have a motion to adjourn? All in favor?